Okay, approval of the minutes, regular session.
Second.
Rittenberry?
Yes.
Hood?
Yeah.
Meredith?
Yes.
Grantson?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Cartier?
Upstart.
Okay, approval of reports and bills.
Motion.
Second. Rittenberry?
Yes.
Hood?
Yeah.
Meredith?
Yes.
Grantson?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Cartier?
Okay, presentation of petitions letters and other communications. I do have, do have some information regarding the, our future occupancy of the municipal court building. And I talked to Tommy Clayton for a few days. And the two desks that we will need, the two tables that we will need, that are slightly, they're a foot shorter than each one of these tables. And that'll be a thousand and sixty-nine dollars. So, so I'm looking for someone to approve that, that purchase. It's gonna take four to six weeks for delivery. They're about the same color, but the same, are exactly the same size as the existing tables in there, in the, yes, court building. So. This, okay.
Rittenberry?
Yes.
Hood?
Yeah.
Meredith?
Yes.
Grantson?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yeah.
Okay, any other petitions letters and other communications? Okay, under unfinished business?
I've got something.
Okay.
We've had, you know, the game warden came last, or two weeks ago to talk to us about the coyote deal on the south end of town. The guy's name that he gave us two weeks ago was Johnny Coaklin, he's a guy out of Dyersburg. I finally talked to him the end of last week. And he said that he would be willing to come over here and help us with our problem. He was supposed to be at the meeting tonight, but wasn't able to come because he's sick. I told him I'd pass along his information. He says he uses foothold traps, which are what the game warden was talking about. That if somebody's dog were to get in it or something, it wouldn't harm the animal. And he just let, get the dog out and either let its owner have it or let it go. He was concerned about getting permission from the property owners back there to be on the property. He is licensed in Tennessee, I do not know if he's licensed in Missouri. He was gonna talk to, talk to Brian about that. He wants to do this job, as long as he said it was in one area and wasn't all over town. One area, he wanted four hundred dollars per week as a flat fee, with a two-week minimum. He did not, he was not gonna charge per coyote that he caught, that was just gonna be a flat deal. So, I talked to him, that's what I know. I'm throwing that out there, if y'all wanna talk to Lawrence about it.
You already did talk to Lawrence?
I have not talked to Lawrence, so. That's what I know on that, I don't know what y'all wanna do with it, but there you go.
No, I'm okay with, with y'all making, we probably need to get somebody, you know, we probably need to get the property owners where he's gonna do the trapping.
Right, you can't just go on somebody's property, just, you're gonna give their permission.
I told him that we could probably.
We could probably help facilitate that, I would think.
I told him we probably could, I didn't think that'd be a problem.
Two, two weeks?
Two week, a two-week minimum is what.
Okay, it's gonna be four hundred dollars a week?
That's right.
Eight hundred dollars?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's several back there that aren't that.
Yeah, there's several.
Yeah, it's, it's cut up pretty good. As far as different property owners.
I'm sure the property with the tree line is, don't you?
I think so, I believe that's right.
Yeah, we just need the property owners' word about where trapping is gonna take place. We can identify that, he might have, he, he probably needs to help identify where he thinks he can do the best for that.
Well, and he had said when I talked to him on the phone, he hadn't obviously looked at the property. So, it was hard for him to make, really give a price or anything else, cause he hadn't seen it. But based on what I was telling him about the tree lines and the size of it, that's what he felt like. It had to come run the traps every day for two weeks and see where we got. So.
What's your idea?
Well, I'm okay with it, I guess it's just a business decision as to whether you wanna go forward or a policy decision.
As long as, how are we gonna avoid being liable for anything that occurs?
If you wanna talk about liability, I'll talk to you about it in a closed session.
Well, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, okay, so we're gonna let that stand for a little while?
Well, we'll go into closed session, I guess, at the end of the meeting and see what he has to say and then move on from there.
You'll do it now?
No, I was saying that at the end of the meeting, we'll go to closed session.
You can do it anytime, okay, alright, any other unfinished business? Okay, and the next thing, reports, the mayor's report. And I talked to Mr. Rosen today, and he's still working with a Nevada investor regarding Walmart building. And yeah, he told me what, what they're discussing, but I'm not allowed to, to tell it. The economic team is still waiting on a contract between the arts council and the city.
Yep, our, our meeting fell apart, I, I had a business meeting on the day we had it scheduled, so that came up later. And then I think it's a bit hard to get one scheduled again for this week, so we're shooting for next week.
Okay, alrighty. Next thing, your appointments, effective April first, two thousand eighteen, on the housing authority board, two people are up. One is Rodney Fisher, one is Joey Leffler, so I'm reappointing both of them. On planning and zoning, I'm appointing Steve Moten to replace Carolyn Robertson, who resigned on March second due to health reasons. So I do need a, a motion and confirmation of, of these appointments.
Rittenberry?
Yes.
Hood?
Yeah.
Meredith?
Yes.
Grantson?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Alrighty, and the next thing is the FEMA park property. And, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Earl Bulletin to speak, and. Come, come, speak up.
Tell us how we got up to this point?
Yes, sir, tell, tell them what's going on, so they won't be surprised when they hear it.
Okay, bud. I'll, I'll read some of this to you, it's, it's not but one paragraph, so that lets council know what's going on. But it is a purchase option, and it's conditioned on one thing. And that's, I can read it to you. The condition present for this agreement is for the Crowesville City Council to approve a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, or an amendment to the Crowesville zoning ordinances regarding the size for subdivision, use that would allow lots smaller than seventy-five hundred feet, and such other amendments necessary for the proposed development. And buyers attached to this option, a proposed plot of uses and would show proposed lot size, and proposed dwelling size, and height, as typically shown on any proposed subdivision plan. So, when this contract comes back, it's supposed to have a request of what they want you all to do. You want me to share with them who the contract is with, or will we?
You might as well.
Well, and this came, I think, through some relatives of his in Crowesville, and Mike got ahold of them. But the purchasers are, are centered to entertainer, and his agent, I guess, Alan Warren, I've talked to him, I've talked to Warren three times. But they, they've developed an interest in this thing, come out of here and done something. For this city, I think he's, well, he's getting Crowesville or Haytown, what, he, he's from around there. He, they have a sincere interest, and they, they're contacting their engineers now, gonna make a recommendation. They come back with this contract, which will come back to y'all, so nothing be done till y'all say it. But that's the condition that they're gonna purchase them.
That's correct, so all the owners signed the contract last week, and that was second day air to California, can't get it there overnight, and.
Mike, they're talking about buildings, not trailers, they want buildings, possibly even a townhouse.
So, they, they, the owners have signed the contract now, and I'm sure the, that the buyers will also, soon, probably today. And, and second day air back, so we should have it this, you should have it this week. And this has been a, a process, that property's been for sale for over ten years now. And nobody's taken a nibble until now. And it looks like it's going to be something that is going to be very, very good for the city of Crowesville. So hats off to everybody.
If they do what they're talking about, it'll be a lot more than what y'all approved, you know, for that.
Right, it'll go before the planning and zoning first, and then they'll make a recommendation to the city council. And, and then, and in order to have this occur, then the city council has to approve their plan.
And then the purchase is closed within forty-five days after the city council.
Right, thank you, anybody got any questions? Okay, Liberty Utilities, the rate hearing is going to be on the twenty-third at noon in Saxon City Hall. And as I've said before, I'll be there, and for us, it's fourteen dollars and nine cents a month per house, for bill, I guess I'd say. And up north, it's only two dollars and six cents. Brownfields, I talked to Edward today, and he is gonna go ahead, he has, has been given the go-ahead with the state, and will file in court this week. The airport car, I believe that the city council approved is six thousand dollars for the purchase from Missouri Surplus property. The Cornell property, where are we at? Pardon me?
Do we have a car?
Not yet.
I gave Terry the go-ahead last week, I guess it was, on, on the Cornell property from a legal standpoint, and I guess it's been raining ever since.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll probably get it when the weather clears.
Legally, we're done.
Yeah, I think we're done with it.
Good job, thanks.
So, ready to do it?
Yep, yes.
Okay. The Missouri Economic Development Marlboro Project has been slowed due to rain, it's almost complete. And, and I counted eight fire hydrants out there that we didn't have before. The, let's see, and they have to, they have to do a, a test DNR.
Back t-test, they, they, we're doing one this afternoon, we're trying to run them all.
Moreland Drive, we, we did, remember this, we advertised for bids for, for Moreland Drive, so that's a little bit behind there. The Marlboro sidewalks, Mississauga will apply for a grant for August two thousand eighteen. The Rex Center roof is just kinda sitting there, the materials are on top, can't do much, either it rains or the wind.
They were working on it this weekend.
Pardon me?
They were working on it this weekend.
Well, they get when they can, but it's not, it's slow. The river forecast, I give you that, nope, but I broke that down, anyway. It's supposed to crest tomorrow, and it's supposed to start going down very, very slowly. And just as long as it doesn't get to forty-four feet, because then we don't have the money for the casino. So, if it gets to, I believe, forty-two feet, then they have to, the only gate that's left open right now is the Wonder Bunky. If it gets to forty-two, then they have to close it. I left a message with Scott Lawrence, and, and he will be making an announcement in March regarding the location and services he's gonna provide. Let's see, light up Crowesville, Amarin, we, of the six hundred and fifteen lights we have right now, we are twenty-seven percent to go. Got a hundred and sixty-five now, instead of a hundred and sixty-two, so that's twenty-seven percent. State Emergency Management Agency, we got a letter dated February eighteenth, which we have, have thirty days, which will be obviously March, the, probably March the sixteenth. And that we have to notify them of any changes we think ought to be made in that flood map, and then it's done.
Who's working on that?
I did some, and Terry should be doing some also.
Have we had John look at it at all, just to?
John, John, John sent it to us also, we already had a copy. Oh, you meant that John, oh, I meant John Chittin, okay.
You meant Ferguson.
I meant Chittin.
Ferguson sent it to us.
Okay, I know, he got one too.
Okay, but did John Chittin is involved in this too?
Yes.
John Chittin took a copy two weeks ago, I believe.
Alright, that's the mayor's report. Police?
We have one more position open on the police department, and I'd like to fill that position with Shane Wiseman, who is a Haytown police officer. He's wanting to come to Crowesville, his fiance works at Bayou Head Start here. I think he's thinking about moving to Crowesville, so I'd like to recommend him for hiring, he's on police department, he has twelve years. Marking as law enforcement officer and four years under jail. So I'd like to recommend him with approval of the council.
Okay, I'll accept your recommendation. Do you wanna? Twenty?
You want, you want me to move?
Yeah.
I made that motion.
I second it.
Rittenberry?
Yes.
Hood?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
Grantson?
Yes.
Duckworth?
Yes.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Cartier?
Upstart.
We were giving it two weeks notice, I know, notified, we are on memo, so give it.
Did it?
No, we got it.
It's the best part.
Okay.
Shelter report, I got the shelter report for the animals. At this time, this is the animal shelter report, they've got eighteen, at the shelf eighteen dogs, seven cats. Intake is twenty-eight dogs and ten cats, and owners pick up with seven dogs and no cats. This is what Doc's been, been scratched through, and I can't read what that's.
They're going to the rescue.
Okay, eight, going to rescue, eight, eight dogs, one cat. They had one dog euthanized, seven cats euthanized, they had four one dogs and five cats. And the food that they got, five fifty pounds, whatever for the dogs, two forties for the cats, and they had two dogs trapped and two cats trapped. Got a lot of wild things down here. I might hand you this at the last minute, and they don't, they don't bear it out. I think everybody in town is probably wanna know that they got twenty-two skunks, and thirty, they had twenty-two, they got thirty-eight skunks trapped. So maybe we won't have that cologne there.
I know one guy got six skunks in one yard trapped.
That's been rough.
So, all right.
That's, that's all on this animal shelter report.
I got one more thing to say. With the water bed up, there'll be deer and stuff running around town.
Yeah.
So if you see them trapped, don't try to approach them, because they're wild, and will hurt you. There was a, two deer running down Ward Avenue, day four yesterday. Just give us a call, we have.
Charlie, oh, sorry.
I've got the fire report, from Chief Charlie. Fire calls from two twenty-one, on two twenty-one eighteen was a call to eleven oh five Walker, the smoke scare, nothing found. On the twenty-fifth, at two oh four Dale, so the ceiling light that shored it out, they responded to that. On the two twenty-seven, R three school at McCarty, a fire alarm was sounding due to cooking. On March the first, called Fifteenth and Davis, was a vehicle fire that had moderate damage. And on the fourth, was a mutual aid to Kenneth, standby at Station Two. They also report that the statewide tornado drill will be conducted on Tuesday morning at ten AM. And that will be training for the month of February. The training for the month of February was at two of Layla Casino for pre-planning of the facility. According to Chief Jones, there's seventeen members with present. That's all for the fire report.
I have something under emergency management, reference to a sign that I, our safe shelters at school, and I've got a couple of them. Six is here, folks, in Kansas City, up in Cape, and they've been down and looked at this, and this is what we've come up with. As far as notification, when the shelter will be open. So if you'll look at the, picture on the back. And that's a picture of one at the elementary school, where the gentleman is standing next to it. Will have double-sided sign, so they're responding to the storm shelter. If you notice up on the top of the brick facade at the top, there's the lights on there. And those lights will be on whenever the shelter is open. And this one at the bottom is the way it will look between administration building and the middle school.
And the light will be on and it's open to the public.
It's open to the public, whenever the school is in session. But there's a breakdown of the costs, and the, that's the two signs, is one thousand eight sixty-nine thirty-seven. With installation costs one thousand six seven one sixty-two. And the school maintenance people are going to run the electric to the site, and the total will be thirteen thousand five thirty ninety-nine. And this would be a great addition to the storm shelter, whenever it's open for people to know where to go, and, and when the light's on, and take the cost.
And you're taking out your emergency management funds?
I don't have a lot in there, but. I feel like it needs to come out of, and probably solve it, bring that, and then we put the next move.
This doesn't have anything to do with the school, the school, it, the problem is, the way I understand it, and, and is that the community doesn't seem to know when the shelter is open, and doesn't seem to have a good idea of where they're supposed to go in, to the building. So, we're fine about it being put on the property, and we are willing to run the electricity. And the sheriff's department has donated the lights, just cable got the lights. So it's just a matter of if the city wants to put the signs there on it, but we're okay with it being put on our property. So people will know when it's open, and I think y'all have discussed when it's gonna be open?
Where'd you say the money was coming from?
Is the money coming from there, do you have the money to do that?
I don't have the total cost to do it, I would have some of it, because most of the emergency management funds are earmarked for the outdoor one side of maintenance. But I'll have some left properly in, could at maintenance, in the fire department side. Maybe have.
Half and half, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. They would have, we, we do have a equipment, or emergency in half out of sales tax, maybe that way?
You have half of it in there?
I could probably get by with half of it, yes. Say they want fifty percent up front.
Right. And. You don't have to sign this contract.
Right, sign the contract, and fifty percent up front, and the other fifty percent at kind of completion, which they said would take about five weeks to make the sign. And get it constructed, and understand they're making free signs for first take night. And also, they just put up a sign out to Bank of Missouri, candidate sign that.
And they're really good on schedule. I, I would make a motion to take half out of emergency management, another half out of sales tax, and go ahead and purchase these. Because I do agree that that is something that you can watch on stormy nights, is, the main question is, other than when the sound's gonna go off, which is always gonna be a conversation, is the shelter open, so.
I second it.
Rittenberry?
Yes.
Hood?
Yeah.
Meredith?
Yes.
Grantson?
Yes.
Duckworth?
No.
Bulletin?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Terry's not here with us this evening, and so our, he did tell me that they were, they were gonna start trying to fix some of the potholes and things. But we did fix a couple of them, and with all the rain and stuff, it kinda washed it out, because you about have to have asphalt to go in the holes. That chat won't work, it comes on out, so.
It's gotta be dry when they put it in there, so.
Alright, code enforcement?
I've been surveying several properties regarding nuisance, and I've spoken with multiple property owners recently regarding their code violations. Any letters being mailed, we continue to have an extension to abate the nuisance to the end of March. As you can tell, because sometimes the rain, it may come a couple days in a row, so just give them enough time to abate the nuisance. So when I do go around to check to make sure everything's done, it, it, give them enough amount of time to resolve them. And the city of Crowesville, we still partner with the nurse goodwill, would allow volunteers to work with our street sanitation crew. And, and the street and sanitation guys have been really good with the volunteers, so we appreciate that.
I've got two questions, because I wanna make sure that you got these, because I was told you did. Twelve oh three Grand?
Mm-hmm.
You did, have you followed up with that one?
Yes, twelve oh three and Cross Street, twelve oh three, twelve oh six. And I recently had a gentleman, well, I'll tell you, I didn't really call it.
But also on Churchill, I wanna tell you thank you for following up on the issue that we had, along with you and Terry on working with that, hopefully we got that resolved.
Well, we did, and I did call DNR to make sure that, you know, just to know the process.
Okay, we did have a concern, they were crushing cars, and on eighty-four, without draining them. So we did have a few business people and people call. So, the conversation was, before the rumor got out there, was that Sonia had discussed it with the contractors and told the contractors that it was okay. That conversation did not happen, Sonia did not have a conversation with the contractors. So, before she was notified of that, or we were, the contractors were already gone. So her and Terry had followed up with that, and it was a pretty quick process, so I do want to say thank you, because it could have been something that we could have let up waiting, been figuring. Try to claim something up?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia.
And I was, during the Thursday, I'm thanking for this Rogers, I'm bringing it to our attention. There was a gun sound in the newspaper, I mean, I should be assisting the collector's office, and it was something that was openly brought to our, in our meeting, about the, especially during winter months, when I'm mobile. You know, to go out in the rain. And so I assisted the collector's office, and so, and I got the call from the city council to do that. I don't understand why that would be a problem, we all are city employees, and to help one another is just like part of, you know.
Thank you for taking that responsibility as well.
Okay, I'm, there's not a cemetery report, so Parks and Recreation?
Yeah, we were wrapping up basketball season, it should be over with next Monday. Baseball, softball signings are still going on, but better get them in quick, or there'll be a cutoff. Probably go through the next two days. So um, probably go through the next two days. So if you know anybody that's not signed up or dragging feet about it, they need to wait up. Um, we still got water uh, at the Riverfront Park, I'm trying to get it out of there as quickly as I can. Do the best you can.
Get a load of that.
Not working hard enough. And uh, waiting on some dryer weather for the roof and dryer weather for the grant money that was given. It bought us the, the two married around, the two seashells, the little French park, the Wayne Park, it's just too muddy and terrible. So as soon as we get some good weather, we'll get down there, that's all we got.
Alright, thank you. Does it, nothing, okay, library?
This weekend, the C H S Drama Department is going to have the Wizard Buzz. It's gonna be Friday evening, two showings on Saturday and two showings on Sunday. So it'll be in the theater and the tickets are seven dollars each and you can purchase them at the library. If you wanna see that play, I'm sure it'll be very good. We're preparing for summer reading again and our theme this year is libraries rock. So I'll be doing a lot of that work this weekend when I'm at the library for the drama department. So I'll be able to give you more details as time goes on.
Thank you. Water, sir?
We opened bids, uh, I think that's a day bound, but we opened bids on the clarifier project. And bid forty-five thousand, budgeted in sewer extension. The low bid was Fat Tech Waste Water Solutions out of St. Louis, at forty-four thousand seven hundred. This is the same company that did a work a couple of years ago on, on another clarifier, was always been happy with it, they do good work. So I asked y'all to put up bid.
I was gonna accept the lowest bid from Lion Tech at forty-four seven.
Very good.
Rindberry.
Yes.
Hood.
Yes.
Meredith.
Yes.
Grandson.
Yes.
Duckworth.
Yes.
Bulletin.
Yes.
Harty.
Yes.
Insurance?
Uh, we're continuing on with our bids for the health insurance. Um, the current carrier wants to sit down with us on um, March thirteenth. And I would hope that some of the committee members would be able to meet that day and sit down with them to discuss the renewal rates. Other than that, that's what I'll add.
What time are you thinking?
Um, it probably has to be evening.
Okay. So we wanna post a meeting, what time?
Say five thirty.
Okay. What day? Thirteen?
Lawrence, are you available then?
What day is that?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday?
I'm, I don't know if I got thirteen.
That should be.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Alright, new business?
I've got something real quick, um, Sue brought this to my attention. Um, last Wednesday, uh, Paul Shaw was elected the regional seven district of Missouri Rural Water Association. Um, which is a good thing financially for the crow, the city, because it helps pay for training and courses for him. As well as kinda gives a lot, because he is good in the field that he does, so very knowledgeable, so. Um, I'd like to congratulate him and do a round of applause for him.
Alright, um, anything else? Call from business from the floor? You got any bills? Nope, alright, JJ, it looks like you're gonna get out, out on time. Okay, um, and resolutions and motions and other communications, we're gonna do a little quick closed session on the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion going to closed session for legal.
Rindberry.
Yes.
Hood.
Yes.
Meredith.
Yes.
Grandson, yes. Duckworth.
Yes.
Bulletin. Harty.